Collaborated with and sought input from various stakeholders, including local authorities and development partners. For instance, three engagement trials were held with local officials from the county to solicit their input into the draft document. One in Taba for officials from Cape Mon, Babu and Bumi. One in Baga for officials from Niba, Rambasa, Riverses and Bon. And one is Wadu for officials from Maryland, Sando, Branco, Roji and Rambele. Also, we sought support from UCI. The team had several engagements of government agencies, civil society organizations, members of the business community and the national legislature. A special legislative group on the VAT implementation was launched in Baga in 2021, while select members of OSIS, WISB and FANAS committee formed part of the VAT implementation study toward Rwanda in 2022. Honorable Protempore, as already indicated, by adoption of the VAT, the government of Liberia intends to use it as a catalyst for improving Liberia's tax system in response to the increasing need to improve tax compliance and hence maximize revenue generation for national development. The VAT as proposed is a neutral tax, broad-based with minimal exemptions, transparent and more importantly encourages voluntary compliance. Honorable Protempore, considering the importance of VAT reform in Liberia, we look forward to your continued support to have the VAT law enacted, which will lead to the generation of additional revenue for the government of Liberia and hence reduce the current fiscal gap. Karibah, your sincerely, Joseph Yimabarkat Senior, resident of Republic of Liberia. And attached is the proposal for an act to amend by two of the Revenue Code of 2000 to provide for value-added tax VAT replacing goods and services tax, the GST. By the President Protempore and distinguished members of the Senate, a reading of the communication from the President of Republic of Liberia for consideration on the proposal to amend Chapter 10 of the Liberian Revenue Code.
Of the single colleagues in the interest of compliance and increasing the revenue Emerald House and force of on the challenge of the 10th of November 2022. What is your opinion?
Thank you. Madam Senator Protempore, I understand it. Distinguished senators, having listened to our communication on the President of the Republic of Liberia considering a proposal to amend Chapter 10 of the Liberian Revenue Code and move it back to Chapter 2, the communication and the law attached is sent to the committee of WISB and FANAS in the budget, the second committee of work, second committee of work and then report to Plenary from now to Tuesday, next week. I'm going to take a second.
About this thing in our motion already before, currently was a late, early end.
Communication from Senator Amorad and Conan Obabu County requesting funding for LSCC to prosecute Marginae corruption case. The Liberian Senate, April 22, 2022. The Honorable Yomli Kanga Lawrence, President Protempore, the Senate Inspector Section, Capital Building, Grovia, Liberia. Subject: Funding request for LSCC to prosecute Marginae corruption case. Dear Honorable Protempore, President Mark Compliment and Mr. Frank Gudar, a matter of concern, the capital, the rest of the of resources to the Liberia, among the important officials of the Marginae County Health. As you may be aware, the LSCC has located certain individuals, including former encouraging officials of the Marginae County Health and business sector for targets of capital property tax, health of property, temporary public wealth, technical facilitation and physical preservation. A document served from a that provides a tax for the fix among main project agreement, FARA, a UCI for the project, Internet improved healthcare delivery services for citizens of Marginae County. Two other defendants, Leroy and Ousia, William Johnson, have already been arrested and are currently detained at the Kakata Center prison based on indictment from, as you said. However, the remaining defendants are still obliged. Given the gravity of the allegations and importance of ensuring accountability and transparency in the management of public funds to deliver critical services to our people, our respectfully request your intervention in ensuring that necessary resources are passed mainly for 2000 United States dollars, be this prioritized by the nature of finance and development planning to the LSCC to enable them to prosecute these cases effectively and expediently to avoid the cancellation of the FARA by the United States government that supports Liberia's sector. It is crucial that those responsible for this alleged and alleged act extent of the law. Our support in this matter will be greatly appreciated and will demonstrate the commitment of the Liberian Senate to combating corruption and promoting good governance in our country. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Please accept the assurances of my highest extent. Sincerely, Senator Amorad and Conan of Babu County. The Senate Committee on Public and Solidity of Government, somebody at our committee, PSC. By the President Protempore and distinguished members of the Senate, a reading of the communication from your colleague requesting funding for LSCC to prosecute Marginae corruption case.
The senior colleagues down on the ladies of communication of the government of Africa are very
Our intention is finished. Our experience is is on board.
So, sir. Can I quote the second of the communication on this? Um. What is the word? Are you ready for?
Yeah, ready.
Um, I love the part. By the way, how you ready for this day? You might consider that since a day, it is a national request or is obviously all of the session that is for the occasion of the party. I don't think there's a there's a official for that. I think there's a compliance issue. There's a request that leadership can handle for the LSCC and finance issue. All agree that leadership faces a mora and we can propose a plan at the conference. Uh, thank you.
Please prepare later. This is the President's desk. Communication from Senator Sa H Joseph of Mossawara County requesting for urgent intervention to address fire pluses in Mossawara County. The Liberian Senate, April 22, 2024. Honorable Yomli Kanga Lawrence, Select Protempore and colleagues, Inspector Section, Capital Building, Grovia, Liberia. Dear Honorable Protempore, Lawrence and esteemed colleagues, Inspector Section. Subject: Request for urgent intervention to address fire pluses in Mossawara County. Our right to your extreme office and extreme colleagues today, for matter of utmost urgency of the Senate regarding the recurring fire incident within Mossawara County. As the direct letter sent out of the citizens of Mossawara County, it is incumbent upon me to bring this critical issue to the attention of the Liberian Senate. In recent months, Mossawara County has been besieged by series of devastating fire outbreaks resulting in significant loss of life in the province. Our students of public welfare and governance is imperative that we collectively address this present challenge. Therefore, I hopefully request the support, the intervention of the Liberian Senate in advocating for emergency public property allotment of three major United States dollars to participate in shape seventeen fire trucks and accessories to Liberia, Liberia. Additionally, funds are required to cover manpower recruitment and training for the establishment of a comprehensive and adequately resourced national fire service response mechanism to cover seventeen industries in Mossawara County. This intervention to permanently address the necessary firefighting apparatus in Bossia is used to mitigate the rates of future fire incidents and ensure the safety and security of our people. I trust in your leadership, your commitment in the weapon of all Liberia and I'm confident that your extreme office will lend your support to this pusher initiative to get touch the lights and landing roofs of the citizens of our country and of Mossawara in particular. They are only the principles of good governance in public service. Thank you for your attention to this matter and I eagerly anticipate your favorable response. Your sincerely, Senator Sa H Joseph of Mossawara County. My pleasure.
Yes. It was called that. About the coming inclusion. Senator Sa Joseph, reason for such a strong power uh, decision. What is your honourable pleasure? Chair.
Well, Mr. Speaker, colleagues, uh, so let me begin by saying our thanks to for all of the communication we have received for looking at this very serious matter. And I move that uh, the communication that we received and send reported to the video defense security and better event uh, to look into and report uh, back there in one week and that uh, the proponent of the use of the at least the bill or two to allow it uh, to research.
So far, we still have a motion I'm ready for. I'm ready to now here.
The governor of Mars of awareness is impressed with the uh, the way the water does the road is twice. I said primarily it's a family that's all about five. So, uh, would you like to do the different one week to next Tuesday? So that we can have a full report and we will send it next week. Next Tuesday, no week. No, to try to start, they come to try. They say, they have to do more to give it a holiday, you know, but it's not going to the holidays in any way. Let that destroy.
Hold on.
Well, uh, I would the president, why are you taking? I would be glad. People who will come here, that was said. They put the apple to work, which uh, in our uh, the piece of
I'm ready to vote. There was a little kid, a young man. There are others after many.
Thank you, Madame Protempore, and thank you, colleagues. Madame Protempore and colleagues, I bring you greetings to the peace-loving people of Mossawara County. There is a situation of national emergency in Mossawara County. There is a house on fire that caused loss of life and property. If you even calculate the number of houses and lots that are alive in Mossawara County is even more whatever request that have placed on this agenda. The issue is very serious to me because I'm a lady this morning, but I'm a and colleagues. During the Ebola crisis, there are a response of a timely response based on the fact that that we had enough ambulance available. Present as we speak, the never term of the first statistic to come before the arrival. You notice that everything is burnt in the house or property that lost. And then the A, some point is in the house and then the next day the person will die in the fire. I remember what I'm approaching a police when my house was on fire that day. Somebody spoke to me, you know, the only referee that I have was at a city, said though you call the fire service will come. Here is the number for the fire service. And I'm approaching, I calculated that when I want to dial the number, where is the problem in fact? Before the arrival of eight, it was a pretty many decisions. And it's about only the greater that that took me from us. Few days after that, a fire incident, incident was set where this little boy was at the door at the window crying for help. And the people continue to talk to him and say, we found it for you. Forty-four for them. The fire catch your hands. He laid the fire and no, that was the name. We are in that situation with protein and quality. It's difficult to decide what this could be. The solution is we should have fire trucks in the seventeen electoral district, foundation in the seventeen electoral districts. When you see other countries in the western world, fire service appear on time because each of those cities have a fire service station. And when they come home, when there's an emergency, all of them will appear at the same time, even neighboring cities, fire service will also come to help. I'm asking this honorable valley. Yesterday was our citizens. That all the was Senator Sa Joseph. Yesterday was the speaker, Unes. It's unpredictable every night. But I'm putting a colleague story be told. Every day I go to bed six o'clock in the morning because I'm worried that if I sleep, another fire will come up again. It's a similar situation to sleep. The only time I go to bed is by six o'clock in the morning before I feed. By that hour, people will come and wake me up. When I see a window back, I'm appealing to this honorable valley that we pleased a lot, that three million. But I brought them and colleagues off a bed. If anything are going to happen to me, you're going to spare off a million dollars for my funeral. The repair, the transportation, the waiting fee. So I'm appealing to this valley that three million to provide seventeen fire trucks, three seventeen, to cook, uh, rip through seventeen different person or thing in the seventeen electoral district and making sure that they are well equipped to continue the situation. I want to say to you, police, thank you and the people of Liberia and the people of Mossawara County, look after you in any decision that you're going to take, arrest.
Okay, that was Senator Joseph speaking. He shared in admonication to the House of Senate as he relates to the continuous fire incident in Liberia. So he's kind of asking the House of State to add additionally three million dollars to help the seventeen districts to have those fire service stations. So that's his communication to the Senate, he did a elaboration on it. So keep following, this is your reporter, Michelle Moore, and the report for for the various TV in Liberia.
So we can be able to track to our cause.
President of President's desk, just receive a commitment from the President, Republic of Liberia, the President. Senator Yomli Kanga Lawrence, President Protempore of the Liberian Senate, Inspector Section, Capital Building, Grovia, Liberia. Modern President Protempore. I'm pleased for somebody I go following in the mission. Their confirmation where applicable, that authority. Two K Williams, vast year from the special customer services for our Senate, so as to show smooth transition in government. Karibah, sincerely.
While I'm nation, I'm quite happy to talk to you. What is your name?
He's very
yeah. And the testimony position is the testimony position in the court. We'll follow. I have no idea what's happening. So, um, we will we will follow. Um.
Committing a bill for an act to amend Chapter 11 of the executive law of nineteen seventy-two of Corritu. April twenty-two, five forty-four. Senator Yomli Kanga Lawrence, President Protempore. The Liberian Senate, Inspector Section, Capital Building, Capital Building, Grovia, Liberia. Reference submission of a, of a bill for an act for consideration. I presume my compliments, a year with right to transmit to the Senate for consideration, a bill for an act to amend Chapter 11 of the executive law of nineteen seventy-two to establish, build around the Liberian Tourism Authority. By the Protempore and distinguished colleagues, the Liberian Tourism Authority Act of twenty twenty passed by the fifty-four legislature is being reintroduced for passage by the fifty-three legislature as the Liberian Tourism Authority Act of twenty twenty. This bill is envisioned to serve as a principal government agency charged with the responsibility to promote, develop, regulate tourism as a major social economic activity to improve livelihoods, generate employment, revenue and projects and project the tourism sector of Liberia. Comparison to all the modern nations would be and beyond. Establishment of this institution related to follow on to create an improved Liberian's image at the tourism destination, both domestic way and international. Two, for more than development and expansion of the tourism investment in Liberia. What platform it is for for the people and government of Liberia. Four, to promote our standards in the tourism industry through training and more resource development. Five, more responsible and community-based tourism for locals can adopt increased social and economic benefits and improve environment. Six, develop tourism integrity, respect and nurture local cultures so that they enrich the tourism experience and build pride in the tourism sector in Liberia. Seven, promote and ensure the respect and dignity of good tourism investment in Liberia. And if the involved local communities include youth, vulnerable and minority group in all areas of the tourism.